Councilmember Doug Young has our prayer and pledge. Ms. Young.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. Be with our local heroes, police officers, the firefighters, the EMTs, and many others who have served us. We ask for the safety of our troops deployed in harm's way all over the world. Be with this council and staff as we work to make Murfreesboro a great place to live. And Heavenly Father, be with the people of Haiti as they have witnessed a terrible tragedy. Give them strength and hope. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know who moved the American flag. Who caught that one? Was it right?
They switched them.
All right. Evidently, we're going for states' rights.
That's where it's count mayor with the redo.
All right. Since the council meeting hasn't started yet. All right. At this point, we will start our council meeting. And welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, January 21st, 2010. And we'll endeavor to get the flags moved if we can. Okay. Councilmembers, you have before you your consent agenda. If you have any questions now, it's a good time to raise those. If not, I'll accept a motion that we accept our consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the zoning ordinance Flood Plane Zoning.
Move this passage on third and final reading. Second.
Motion, second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Old Ascassus Highway, Rocky Lane, and Gunnerson Avenue to a local commercial CL district.
Move for approval on third reading.
Second.
All right. You have a motion in second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend 6.96 acres of the Aurora Place portion of Sunset Ridge PRD located along Joby Jackson Parkway.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Please call.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road to a commercial French CF district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located south of Highway 99 and west of St. Andrews Drive to a commercial French CF district.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
We'll consider now for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 29 subdivisions, Plats, and Maps, Section 29-5 dealing with fees for site plans and preliminary subdivision plans.
Move this passage over reading.
Second.
Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 4-46, dealing with beer permits.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll hear a presentation from Ms. Ronnie Shaw with regards to One Book, Community Read Selection. Ms. Shaw, welcome.
Hi. Thank you, and thank you all for your time. I am Ronnie Shaw, the Executive Director of Read to Succeed. Read to Succeed is our local literacy initiative. We promote literacy and reading in Rutherford County, and we do that through large public events like our Reading in the Schools Day, our Reading Rally, our Unplug and Read, and our One Book, which I'm going to tell you about tonight. And we also have age-specific programs like our sixth grade spelling bee, our high school arts conference, our family literacy programs, and our adult literacy program where we provide tutors one-on-one to meet with adult learners. Folks who might be interested in our programming or volunteering should check out our website, which is at ReadToSucceed.org. And I have some new brochures I'm going to leave for you folks on the council here to enjoy, and our website is in there also in contact information. We do every year pick a book along with our collaborators. None of our programs do we do on our own. We work with the city schools, the county schools, the Chamber of Commerce, MTSU, and many, many businesses and other folks. And to do this initiative, we pick a book, and we just ask folks in the community to read it. That's all you have to do, is read the book and enjoy it. We're hoping to have some conversation about a book. This year, the title is The Soloist, and it's by Steve Lopez. It's a very readable story. It's about a gentleman who's a columnist at the LA Times who makes friends with a homeless man who happens to be an ex-Juliard student and a wonderful musician. And so, the story is about their relationship, and it's fascinating. So, as you all know, I hit the county commission and the three city councils and the Rutherford County School Board and the Murfreesboro City School Board, all in January and February, and I asked the leaders of our community to take the lead in reading and show the rest of the community that literacy does matter. So I am here to offer this book to the highest bidder-- no, no, I mean the first taker. No, the first taker, for sure. And I just want to say that the city council here in Murfreesboro has been a great friend to Read to Succeed. You guys always support us, send us spellers when necessary for celebrity events, and come out to do Mayor's Awards and stuff like that. And it really does make a difference. It really says to the community that you guys care. So that's my little preamble for anybody who's thought about it now, wants to take this book. Here it is, ready to go.
Big print.
What did you say? What did you say, Count Munyon?
Is it available in big print? What about Mr. Bratcher? Wants to know if there's a lot of pictures in it.
Well, there aren't pictures, but there has been a movie made about it, Mr. Bratcher. And so, you could take the book and see the movie and then try to fumble through. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Mr. McFarland.
Do you know how to spell sombrero?
S-O-M-B-R-E-R-O. Sombrero.
I think that Mayor Bragg has a word for you, too, he'd like to spell.
Mascara, and I still don't know.
Well, you can all know, I don't know if you get comfort out of this or not, but all around the county, wherever I go, people will walk up to me like our very own Chief Glenn Christman, and immediately start spelling words. His was serendipity. So I have traumatized many leaders of this community. You never know who I've been asked.
Did Chief Christman get beat by a mascot that couldn't even speak?
No, we don't need to bring that up. No, the mascot did a very good job. This year's winner was Vincent Windrow of the Celebrity Spelling Bee, and he was certainly fabulous.
He must have practiced a lot.
Yes.
Well, Ms. Shaw, thank you very much.
And thank you.
And if you want to deliver that to Councilmember McFarland, that'd be great. And I'm sure he'll want to share that with the rest of the council members. After he finishes, we'll be able to tell you how quickly he was able to accomplish his task.
I'm sure the rest of the council will join me, Ms. Shaw, and go into a local bookstore to buy our own copy.
Or our very own local library.
Or our very own.
Yes. There are many copies floating around. Please feel free to pick one up. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for being with us tonight. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director with regards to bids for the renovation of the Sportscom indoor/outdoor pools. Welcome, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to present to you the bids for the renovation of the Sportscom indoor and outdoor pool. If you recall, on October 21st, I came to the city council and asked for architectural engineering services to develop the plan specifications and the bidding documents for the renovation of those two pools. Just to go back, it was in 2004 when we first engaged Johnson &amp; Bailey in looking at the renovation of the indoor/outdoor pool and Sportscom. And the report that was generated at that time showed that both pools need renovation, and there was particular problems at that time. And since those six years have passed, we have continued to increase the number of problems that we have, deck sinking, filtration systems that are failing. Matter of fact, last year, Mr. Nate Williams, our aquatics coordinator who is in the audience, we actually had him inside one of the filters, one of the big 84-inch filters, trying to replace some of the interior portion just to make it through the summer. And we really kept our fingers crossed just to make sure that we got through that particular point. We had many complaints from the public saying that, when are you going to do something to this pool? We had other requests of, it'd be really nice to have a nice water slide or something that would appeal to a broader audience for the public. And so, one of the things that you will find, if you look at trends over the past years, what they're doing is they're taking old pools, just like we have. Sportscom was built in 1987. It's 22 years old. Most lives of pools run somewhere around 15 to 20 years. We're at 22 years, and we're experiencing a lot of the things that you see with a 22-year-old pool. So, you know, we're really operating at this point to where we're telling the council, if you do not consider this favorably tonight, we do not believe we can open the outdoor pool, which is one of our most popular venues in the city. We have thousands of people to come to the outdoor pool each year, and quite frankly, we think this is a good move. We've got good bids, we think, for this. We have a very aggressive schedule. Matter of fact, what we're going to try to do is have this pool open by May 27th, which is the beginning of the new swim season. But just to reemphasize, I think we're at a point right now where we have to make a decision whether we are going to have an outdoor pool or not. When we did consider the renovations of the outdoor pool, we looked at what were the latest trends? What were some of the things that we could do to provide a better venue for our citizens? What could we do that would make it more enjoyable? When we looked at converting the old outdoor pool to a water park, it was said by our pool consultants that our participation would go up somewhere between 30 and 50 percent, and we would draw some of the people that we hadn't gotten to the pool, the teen population that is always a target audience of trying to find some kind of viable recreation for them, broader for families, for smaller children. We just really think this is the way to go. And I think the other plus here is the fact that with the increase in participation, we will also see an increase in our revenues, which should cover the cost and make the pool self-sustaining in terms of operation. So I think there's several benefits to what we're trying to achieve here. We did receive bids on January 19th. We received five bids. The low bid was submitted by Same Construction Company in the amount of $3,250,000. Johnson &amp; Bailey, our architects, has reviewed that. They feel like Same Construction meets all of the requirements set forth in the bid, and they do feel like they can adhere to our very aggressive construction schedule. And based on that, staff is recommending that we go with a low bid from Same Construction Company in the amount of $3,250,000 for the renovation of the pool. Of course, that would be contingent upon any type of legal review from Ms. McGannon's office and the contractor getting all of the documents that the city would require. The other thing that I wanted to speak to, now that we know what the cost of the renovation of those two projects are, the total cost would be $3,463,142. We do anticipate putting that in the 2010 capital request. We did come to the council on November 19th and asked for a refunding resolution, which was approved in the amount of $3.2 million. Mr. Lyle Lynch from Johnson &amp; Bailey is here tonight, and we are over that initial estimate because there were several things that during the plans and specifications that we ran into in terms of compliance, that was okay in 1987 in terms of building the pool, but when you get to 2010, health codes, other things have changed in some of the conditions there. So I would like Mr. Lynch to come up and address those and let you know what we ran into in terms of additional cost.
Mr. Lynch. Well. Mayor, members of the council, plans were reviewed by this body in November, and contract documents were prepared based upon those plans that were reviewed and approved by the council at that time. We had a budgetary number, and we're roughly a quarter million dollars over that number. I wanted to spend just a minute explaining why that has occurred. As we started preparing plans and specs for the project, a couple interesting things we ran into that had to be addressed. One was that the existing pool drainage is spilled onto grade in the property east of the parking lot between Sportscom and the airport runway. When they drain the pool or when they backwash the filters, that water simply spilled onto grade, and that's a current condition, been there since 1987. During the course of preparing documents, Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department determined that this drainage has to be rerouted into a sanitary sewer system. When the filters are backwashed, a large quantity of water comes out very quickly. To accommodate the available flow capacity by Murfreesboro Water and Sewer, we're installing a underground-- let's see, it's a 19-foot, 4-inch long by 11-foot, 4-inch wide by 6-foot, 10-inch deep underground concrete holding tank. So when that surge comes out, then it can be spilled into the Murfreesboro sewer system at a slower rate, so we don't overwhelm the system. The second thing we ran into is we received a soils report from Core Property Sciences on December 4th. They had determined that the soils near the pool, which they couldn't obviously drill in the pool, but we drilled all around it, and they determined that the soils in that area were expansive soils. That would explain some of the structural problems on the east wall of the gymnasium at Sportscom and why the existing pool deck has experienced such problems with settlement and cracking. As their recommendation, which we have incorporated into the contract documents that were bid, is that the area, the new pool area and the new deck area is all undercut two feet deeper than subgrade required, and then backfilled with shot rock. They'll provide the cushion to keep the new concrete from experiencing the same problems as has occurred in the past. The third issue was, there's about 220 feet of pool drain line, the 12-inch line, that through the help of Murfreesboro Water and Sewer and their scoping camera, has been checked and determined that we can't keep that line. It's deteriorated. 26 years of chlorine water was more than it can handle. And the base bid for this is replacement of that 220 feet of 12-inch drain line. And those are the reasons why during the course of preparation of contract documents, we found additional work, and it came in over budget. Any questions about what I've said?
Vice Mayor.
Would you say, Mr. Lynch, that you talk about expansive soils, that would be the spongy-type soil that would raise and fall with--
It does. It changes volume with moisture content. So when you have periods of heavy rain, it'll swell, and during dry periods, it'll settle. And then, again, the soils engineer's recommendation was to put two feet of shot rock between any expansive soils and concrete to cushion that difference.
That's probably one of the bigger expenses, digging that out, replacing that. I haven't seen a bid on it, but I'd say that was probably one of the bigger ones.
It is.
Where does the drain line go? Those 220 feet or whatever?
That particular drain line is between-- there's an indoor pool room and an outdoor pool room. Are you-- I assume we're familiar with the building, so at the indoor pool room, that line exits the building and goes under the pool deck of the outside pool and through the outdoor pool equipment room. And that's the line that was looked at. Like I say, in the contract documents, we have that to be replaced.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Lynch?
Mayor, maybe we talked about the age of this pool. Could you-- I'm sure that this pool has been over 22 years plus or whatever. The life of that pool is-- that's probably a long life of an outdoor swimming pool. Do you have any idea of what a normal life would be, or have we gotten past our normal usage?
Lynch, you want to address that from your conversations with Councilman Hunsinger?
Well, generally, Mr. Bratcher, a life of the pool, somewhere around 15 to 20 years. Given the fact that we've got the expansive soils, you go out and you look at the decking, some places the decks have dropped at least three inches. What we've done over the past six or eight years has come in and actually used a material almost like concrete bonding and feathered the edges in just so that the kids wouldn't trip. But now you see where the concrete is cracking, it's chipping. It's getting to the point that we can't put the Band-Aid on it anymore. So what he was talking about, about the pool drain, it does run under the deck there at the indoor pool, I mean, the outdoor pool. So what we determined is, instead of leaving the one that was questionable and maybe having to come back in a year, two years, five years, whenever that drain fails, and if it does, then it will add the moisture under the deck, which would cause the new deck to fall, it would be more prudent at this time to go back and change that pipe and ensure the life of that pool for the next 15 to 20 years.
Other questions or comments? Is any of this work going to shore up the wall that we've got that has much trouble?
You talking about in the Sportscom itself? No, sir, this would not address that. The renovation of Sportscom would be the next phase that we would want to bring to you, probably sometime later this year to look at, maybe first of next year.
We talked about the change in our plans, but the two questions I have. One, right now, although we do have some handicap accessibility in the pool out there, but not as much, with going to the shallow end pool, does this increase our handicap accessibility?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
Matter of fact, we're going to a zero depth there, much like if you've been to Patterson, you know, the zero depth there area there. Plus, we're putting in a lift in the areas where we do not have zero depth. So we will increase. Matter of fact, everything that we have done in this pool brings us into compliance with current code, with ADA accessibility and Health Department compliance and those kind of things. Because a lot of things that are existing now at the pool have been grandfathered. If we do any type of work out there, we would have to make those modifications.
So some of the work we're doing, although we're having to renovate our pool system, some of it is bringing the pool system into, you know, a better standard--
Absolutely.
And then, my second question is, if we're going to go up 30 to 50 percent, which we hope we will, which will bring us more revenue, do we feel like we have adequate parking out there to handle it?
Well, that was one of the things that we discussed at the October 21st meeting, and our recommendation is to see what the increase is before going out and actually building additional parking. I know Mr. Bratcher had said that, you know, if we have additional parking that we may need, we can actually bump out a piece of curb and gravel a portion until we come back and reconsider that. But I wouldn't want to, at this point, I think, recommend additional parking until I can come with certainty and tell you that, yes, we have increased 30 to 50 percent. We need an additional X number of parking areas, and we would bring that plan back to you at that time.
Other comments? Other questions? All right. You have this recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Director.
May I move the approval of the recommendations of the Parks Recreation Director?
Second. All right. You have a motion, second. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
I know that Mr. Lynch had told the contractors during the pre-bid meeting, be prepared to work seven days a week on this project. So we are shooting for that May 27th then.
Right.
Thank you.
Get it ready to be opened.
And Mr. Williams, you get out there with your camera and take pictures of all these underground pipes and wires and lines and things like that, so we know where they are and what they look like. All right. Thank you very much for being with us tonight. Consider for adoption now a resolution authorizing the filing of applications with the Federal Transit Administration and Operating Administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S. Code, Chapter 53, Title 23, and other federal statutes administered by the Federal Transit Administration.
Mayor Bragg, members of the city council--
Ms. Blaine.
This is a resolution that you have seen annually. This is a vehicle we need to apply for the grants for our public transportation system, otherwise known as Rover. As you know, much of that system is either federally or state-funded, and we need this resolution to send into FTA to apply for those grants. We did add a provision this year that, you know, will allow us to continue to do so and not bring this back annually unless there is a change in any of the named personnel here. So with that recommendation, so we can continue to seek state and federal funding, we'd ask for your approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, second, to adopt this resolution. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution expressing official intent that certain expenditures to be incurred in connection with certain public works, projects, and related expenditures for the purchase of a 75-foot aerial fire truck and equipment and equipment for the fire department be reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Mayor, this provides for reimbursement for the second fire truck that you authorized at the last council meeting. You previously issued a reimbursement resolution for the first one. This just follows suit for the second.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move, approve. Second.
All right, you have a motion to adopt. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we will consider for adoption a resolution requesting the Tennessee General Assembly to pass a private act amending the Murfreesboro City Charter regarding Office of City Treasurer. Ms. McGannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, what you have before you is a resolution asking for a private act amending the city charter to give the city council the option, but not the requirement, to have the offices of city recorder and city treasurer held by the same person. And to provide for the signatures on warrants or checks would be from the city recorder, city manager, and mayor, rather than specifically listing the city treasurer. As outlined in my cover letter, this reflects discussions that your senior staff had and the decision of your city manager that this would be appropriate, these discussions being begun because of the Personnel Director, who serves as your city treasurer, Ms. McGannon's decision to retire, and consideration of whether or not the functions as city treasurer that she was performing, whether it made the best use of personnel resources to continue to have the city office performed by that department head. And so, the suggestion, as expressed in my letter, is that the council tonight decide if they are comfortable with not having the city treasurer also serve as the Personnel Director, because advertisement for the position of Personnel Director needs to begin, and that advertisement should reflect whether or not that individual will also be expected to have the skills necessary and to perform the duties of the city treasurer. So, the request is that you decide if you are comfortable with that tonight as a matter in addition to consideration of the resolution that is before you. We brought it to you tonight in hopes of agreement. But because, in particular, the legislative schedule of the General Assembly, we wanted to get it to them as quickly as possible. I'd be happy to address the ideas or the wording of the proposed charter changes. I'm sure Mr. Lyons would as well.
Any questions or comments? I think all of us probably have been concerned or aware of the fact that we have the treasurer and Personnel Department, and we have the city recorder and the business office. So, you know, frankly, from a hiring, firing point of view, the city manager and his staff need to work more closely with Personnel Director. And that treasurer function could very easily be moved to the city recorder's offices. I think there are plenty of hands on board to make sure that we can keep the 30-plus-odd accounts that we have straight and that, based on the awards of excellence that our city budget folks and auditing have received over the years for fiscal management, I think we've done it and will continue to do a great job, regardless of whether we've got a title stuck in one office or not. That's just the way I'm looking at it, so...
I think it definitely makes everything more efficiently run and smoother, and hopefully, it'll make it easier on staff to communicate with each other. So, I think it would be a good idea personally, but...
It's a streamlining and a more efficiency move to add to the comments this morning, seems to me.
Mayor, I agree with all the comments that have been made.